This is a work session to discuss options for our ARPA funding that we're going to be getting. In conversations with, or actually, let me start with a roll call vote, please. May I have a clerk?
Sakura.
Here.
Terencey.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Caladreno.
Here, thank you. I'll press it.
Will we be closing the doors this closed session?
No, this is a work session. So as I started to say, this is a work session to discuss the city's options for our ARPA funding. We have approximately $550,000 that we're going to be receiving. It's not a ton, but we want to make sure that we spend that wisely. We also want to make sure we all turn on our mics because Phil is recording tonight. You know, because it's not a huge amount, our options are somewhat limited. This is windfall money that we're only going to see one time. And in discussions with council and Sal from HRC and Mr. Lang from DPW, you know, we have quite a few infrastructure needs that we could address pretty effectively with this ARPA money. And Sal at HRC has come up with several options that he's going to be presenting to council and the public tonight. So if you, would you like to take the, we won't have, be able to get your voice if you don't take the mic up there.
Sure.
And please make sure the little green light's on, too. We're going to record this for posterity.
Yeah, it's on. You can hear me. Thank you, Mayor Caladreno. So as was said, a few months back, we took a look at, put together estimates of cost for two sewer repairs and the two main items was sanitary sewer repairs and the Davis Street pump station. Before I get into that, I guess I want to back up into, you may recall a few years ago, the city of Utica received funds to do the Saw Grant where we went through and we cleaned and televised the city's sanitary sewer system and storm sewer systems. As part of that, a full report was generated. All the sewers were raided. We actually have videos of everything. And individuals went through and viewed all those videos and raided all the city sewer systems. During that process, we identified sewers that needed some repair work. We went through the entire system and based on all the Saw Grant, we prioritized, we raided every sewer from, you know, one to five. And with the sewers raided as five being the worst and then one being the best. So looking at it, looking at the entire system, we put together a strategy as to what should be done and what is the highest priorities. We put together four different priorities, priority one, two, three, and four, and I have them color coded on this map. Sorry, it's probably hard to see from that distance, but I can't bring it up further in a moment. So just to go through it, we have, the red is priority one. We have what I call purple, though my lexism colorblind, so I think that's purple, priority two. Blue, priority three, and gray, priority four. So in these areas, we bubbled out or put a little cloud around the areas. And you can also see, once you get closer to this map, that there are color coatings on each individual pipe. So you can actually go up there and take a look and say, okay, that's, you know, that's a yellow, that's a green. And so based on all that, we have a number of different areas that are red. Here, I'm pointing to them right now. The blue is right up here on Brownell. Then we have the, the purple, I should say, is on Brownell. The blue is, we have spotted here at a few locations, and then we have some gray. We've put a cost to each one of the pipes based on the type of repair that was identified. And what we really are, we're targeting to try to stretch the dollars as much as we can. What you see now, instead of going in and digging up and pulling an old pipe out and digging, putting new pipe in, which is very expensive, what's able to be done nowadays to a large extent is what they call sewer lining. Where they'll actually go in and they'll re-clean the pipe, they'll re-televised it, and then they'll actually put a, what they call a structural liner. So it goes in, what they call, they call a wet-in, it goes in as like a fabric and then it's, it has, and it's impregnated with a bunch, with the certain type of, you know, and it's all this chemical stuff. But basically, the bottom line, they put this thing in wet and it's a kind of a heavy canvas, and then they cure it in the pipe. And when it's done cured, the structural strength of that cured pipe, now the new pipe, basically it's a pipe inside a pipe, is as strong or stronger than the original pipe that was in there. You, they're doing that all over. Matter of fact, you may see on Mound Road, which they're doing that large reconstruction project from I-696 all the way to M-59, in the cities of Sterling Heights and the city of Warren, all this, I'd say about 75% of the sewer repair for their sanitary system is being done by sewer lining process. Now sewer lining doesn't, you know, depend, if the sewer is in such disrepair, it's not an option. But we went through and identified that it is an option for the city of Utica to go through and sewer line your system. And that's what we proposed to do. Now, when we put, when we say sewer lined, it includes manhole repairs, because sometimes with long as a sewer, they have the manholes will be in disrepair, so we would have to fix those. We may go in and televise the system and find that there's a localized problem here or there, which they call those point repairs. We may go in there and have a point repaired on at a certain spot and then line the entire system. So based on that process and looking at all the different priorities, the priority ones, which are the reds, we came up with a total of 400, the total is $483,000. So that is to go in and repair all the sewers that are identified in these red little clouded areas. The cost of that, including full design and, you know, contract administration, all that goes along with infrastructure repair projects is 483. For the priority two, which is here on Brownell, that total cost is $111,000. For the priority threes, it's $176,000. And then priority four is $203,000, for a total of $972,000. And the reason for prioritizing them is we understand that, you know, the funds are not, you know, are limited. So we want to prioritize. We want to be able to tackle the sewer, tackling the worst first. And then also, you know, looking at the system, you know, we don't know where funding may come, there may be grants in the future. We wanted to take a look at future possibilities. So that's why we kind of went through it and said, okay, we could maybe tackle the priority ones now, maybe the priority ones and twos, and then if future funding comes, we tackle priority threes. What's nice about doing the, this type of project is that you can, you can do these based on budgets versus, so what I mean by that is you can say, okay, I'm going to budget $400,000, you know, here's $400,000, fix as much as you can, stop when you run out of, run out of money. So what's, it's nice about that is you can kind of control your budget, because you can set up the contracts where if the contractor comes in and, because we haven't been in there for a couple of years to look at it, turns out that there's more work involved in that segment of pipe than was initially anticipated, then we make those repairs. What happens is you just don't get as far in that contract with the work you do. But you can control your budgets. So that was the sanitary sewer pipe side of what we looked at. The other item that we looked at-
Can I mention one thing real quick, Sal?
Yes.
I know in our meeting together, I asked the, you know, non-expert question of what does priority one really mean? You know, how long of a life do we have on that sewer line? And if I remember, your response was, you're basic, on the priority ones, you're basically already living on borrowed time.
Right. Priority ones mean they need to be fixed, they should be fixed now. Could you get three, four, or five years out of them? Sure, but you know, you're a gambler now, you're rolling the dice. You don't know that that sewer's going to, you know, be there working properly over the next year or the next four years, or tomorrow it could fail. You know, it's, these are all, pipes are, all these pipes are in the ground. Best we can do at this point is do a video and look at that video and, and provide our recommendation. We know that all those priority ones have structural problems with them. Large cracks, water seepage coming through. So those cracks could be stable for a while, but then they could collapse, they could fall apart. Nobody knows. I can't, you know, I wouldn't be able to give you the answer, and I don't think anybody could give you the answer. Just, we know that, those are ones you really want to tackle as a priority one. And then priority twos, threes, and fours, they're, they're less critical as you go up. So those are the ones, if funding is available, that you wanted to go ahead and tackle, because they could fail. I don't want to say they could fail tomorrow, because I don't like being one of those kind of people that is scare tactics, but you just don't know and not, you know, as best practice, those are the ones you want to work your way through. Before I jump into the pump station, I mean, if there's any other questions, just feel free just to ask if there's something you don't understand, what I said, or if I wasn't clear. I know I kind of speak fast, so.
Just a quick reminder, sir, I can't see through here. What was priority one's cost?
The priority one cost was $483,000. Yep. So the other infrastructure project that the city have asked us to look at is the Davis Street pump station. On this plan here, we show the location of the pump station here on Davis Street and River Vista. And then here's a little ball location showing the, where the pump station is and some proposed improvements. So we did two estimates of cost for Davis Street pump station. One was a total reconstruction, basically tear everything out that's there now, which is an old well that's steel, that's rusted, and start over, put everything brand new in. So that cost was $525,000 to reconstruct a brand-new, modern pump station at that location. The other was, the other option was pump station rehabilitation program. So what that does is we, we pull out all the guts of it. We take out all the internals of the pumps, and then the well itself stays in place. They would go through and, because there would be a lot of rust, there would be some rehab work done to that, some removal, saw cutting, and basically leaving the structure but rebuilding around it and, you know, welding pieces back together to get that, that, that system in a condition where then we can bring back new electronics, bring back in the pumps and the mechanical, mechanical parts of it. So you have the original well and you have a lot of the new internals with it. So that cost, what estimated cost was $300,000 to rehab the existing pump station at Davis And with, and also, yes, so for the public, Davis Street pump station, the district for that pump station is basically everything here at the southern end of city of Utica, Kristen Drive, River Vista, part of Davis Street. The reason for the pump station is that by gravity, it can't flow to its outlet, which is out onto Utica Road. So the sewage needs to be pumped up to a certain elevation, and then by gravity it flows out. That's the purpose of that. We did look briefly at replacing the entire piping system by a gravity system, but that becomes very expensive. And the piping part of it is very expensive, and then the metering pit and the tie-in at Utica Road becomes very expensive either in looking at that. Preliminary, we decided that wasn't even an option. We wanted to go down and review any further.
What's the expected life of the refurbished pump, if, for lack of better words, compared to like a new pulley system?
I would say that on the refurbished system compared to the new, let's say the pump station that's there now is 50 years old. Yeah. So you get, you got 50 years out of a system which was a steel can, I'll call it steel. So if you refurbished that, you probably could get another, maybe 20 years out of that system, 25. You know, maybe you could push it to 30 years. If we reconstruct it, you're looking at another 60 years of life. So this is an investment for, you know, probably double the life of what the rehab would be. Maybe not quite double, I don't want to exaggerate, but certainly a longer life, yeah.
How good or bad a shape, where do we stand on the pump station as it sits now? It's old.
So if I could just, instead, I'll answer your question in a minute. If I can answer, just add to this a little bit. So in looking at all of this, I don't think our system is in any worse shape than any other community that isn't old. So like all, all of the communities, so it's not just us. And we're not, we're not in this vacuum by ourselves. It's all of the infrastructure, certainly in southeast Michigan. But one of the benefits is the ARPA funds that came along that are going to help us. And the beauty of that is that will help us to, by utilizing those ARPA funds for the sewer system, it'll help us control our costs and capital improvements moving forward. The idea with the sewer system, the rates got, rates got neglected. We, the water sewer system was taxed and had to borrow money, which we're on a recovery plan to pay that back as well as it's making money, to further, potentially further fund some of these other projects in the future. The other, the other thing we can do by having all of these estimates done and utilizing the Saw Grant, there's a possibility of SRF funding, which is, which is infrastructure funding at a low, a low-
Interest.
Low interest rate. Thank you. So those are things that we can look at, but the legwork and preliminary work has been done. Now, moving forward, talking about the Davis Street lift station, sometime around, when we had the flood in '04, I think it was, we did some rehab work at that time. There's some of the electronics has, has been worked on and newer, actually, we've probably replaced it twice. However, the one pump is old, one pump is new. We looked at, we looked at what it would take to keep that going. My recommendation would be to fund the lining, because in the event that the pump station, we had a total catastrophic failure of the pump station, with just one submersible pump and an overhead piping system, we can actually maintain service to that relatively easy and inexpensive while we work on a repair for the, for the station. Where all these other unknowns, you know, it'll just get us in better shape, in a larger scale, quicker. However, the Davis Street lift station, one of the things I want to point out that's really important there, and I would, I would strongly recommend going towards the total rehab, whether it's next year, next month, five years from now. The reason being is that's a confined space entry permit required structure. We have to go below grade, we have to, we have to have retrieval systems, we have to have training, we have to have methane detectors and things. And it's just, it's just, it's just another layer of danger, if you would, for our people. So by a total rehab, what they do is, it's similar to the lift station at Utica Park and Steric, where the pumps are submerged in a pit and all the, all the workings of that, the apparatus is outside, up at grade in a control box. Currently, what we have here is basically a big can, or if you wanted to be scary, a coffin. We have a big can. We have, we have-
You always go dark.
The guy, well, come on now. You're just, yeah, the guy that, you know, sleeps in a submarine. That's not scary. Anyway, so the, the, I would push to go that way, because the likelihood of a catastrophic failure at the lift station is, is minimal. But, but we still, you know, it's aging and it's something that's going to have to be, whether it's a capital improvement project or, you know, if there's some funding, grant funding.
And if I could add a couple of things to what you're saying, Bill. We firmly believe there's more federal infrastructure money coming. We could easily target that next round to the Davis Street-
As you mentioned.
Lift station.
Yep.
You know, kind of my strategy all along has been, how can we use this money to benefit the most residents possible? And I think, you know, lining the sewer lines and the drain lines, that's the best way to impact the most people. You know, keep water bills down, keep from having to bond out, to make, you know, repairs to catastrophic failures. The other issue is intrusion. You know, 60-odd percent of your water bill is actually for sewage. We know, based on some studies Phil's done and conversations with you, that we have a lot of intrusion in our system. So our residents are paying higher water bills, sewer bills, because water's leaking into these lines and it's getting metered and we're having to pay for it. So that, that added benefit of sleeveing these lines will eliminate some of that intrusion. And, you know, also protecting our environment. You know, we got the Clinton River right there, you know, any catastrophic failure to a sewer or drain line could impact our Clinton River or our environment in general. So, you know, I would definitely agree with you that I'm in favor of beginning our, you know, infrastructure work with the sewer, sewer lines.
So I do have a question. So in the process of this, the lining, and let's just say it's, you know, in the street down here, when that happens, what happens to the user of the, the resident that is on that street and their sewer line's being operated on? What happens to their service in the interim?
So the, the lining process, they, the whole process is they go in there, they'll televise, they'll clean and televise it, similar to what they did during the Saw Grant. You know, the sewer, the system would be still operational during that time. Notifications would be, would be sent out. We would ask people to try to limit the amount of views, just so the work can be done. The actual lining part, that's usually a one-day process for each segment. They'll go in there and do segment by segment. When I say day, I don't mean the full day, I'm just that day. So there will be some hours during the day where they'll, when they, when they run that liner into that pipe, and then they expand that liner out, each one of those service taps that come in will be blocked until they cure that pipe. And then what they do is they send out like a robotic machine in there and it cores out each sewer. So there'll be a four, five-hour period where the, the service lines will not drain out. So we, all that would be, all the residents would be notified that, for example, between, you know, 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM, you cannot use your sewer. Yeah. So, and that's usually how it's handled.
What's, what's the diameter of the sewer line that's in most of our residential districts?
You have eight-inch, 12-inch. Okay. But they'd say eight-inch, they had some 10 inches, and you also have some 10-inch. So they're not, they're not extremely large liners, which is nice for the contractor and the efficiency of him to get through it, because the larger it gets, the more complicated it gets.
Is it more like, almost like, maybe like an extrusion process where they just, they sleeve it and they push it through and like, I would say pushing a smaller straw into a larger straw and just catheterize it, right down the process?
That's a pretty good analogy, yes.
Dude, I'd like to give, we only got five minutes, and I know we got some residents here tonight. Does anybody want to speak to any of what Sal has presented tonight or ideas of your own for the ARPA, ARPA funding that we haven't discussed tonight? Neil, sure?
Yeah, yeah, that was a really good presentation, by the way. Thank you very much. Yeah, and most residents probably don't know the situation that we're in. And I, on my side, I would support dealing with the sewer as opposed to the pump. It seems to be something that we don't want. It can hurt us in so many different ways.
So this sleeve is like a soft, a soft sleeve that's dragged through, pushed out, and then cured.
Right.
Because in front of my building, they did new water lines where they took that machine and they pulled that blue pipe through, and that wasn't as fail-safe as they talked about. But I'm assuming this would be-
Was it, did they, did they sleeve, the blue pipe is usually-
They brought it through where it busts up the pipe, is to grab-
Pipe bursting, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they did the pipe bursting. Yeah, with, with pipe bursting, and they can do pipe bursting with water and with sanitary. And that, and that is an option, too. To pay, if the sewer becomes to the point where the sleeving's not an option, then they can do the pipe bursting, where they'll actually, they'll push a pipe through the pipe. And what they do is they'll, they'll have what they call a bursting head that goes through, and it's larger and it, it breaks it, and behind it, they just pull the pipe through. That sounds like what they did.
That's what they did on the roof.
Yes.
I have one last question.
Yes, sir.
Just to understand, like, the financial side of things. If we don't do the pump and then the pump goes bad, I think, sir, you mentioned that we could get an infrastructure loan for like the sewer pipes at like a low rate, if I'm correct? Can we get that type of loan if the pump goes bad and we need to replace the pump? Or is that just for the sewer lines?
So, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, no answer?
So for the SRF loans, you can, you can get those for, for all of this kind of work. It would require a, an application to the state, and there's a, a study that has to be done. I think a lot of it with the Saw work that we did, a lot of, we already have the data, a lot, most of the data, but it has to be submitted to the state for low, low interest rate loans. I think the city might be, probably would be eligible for something. And then, and I don't know the answer to this, but I, I've heard you talk before, Bill, about the city's, you're able to get some kind of funds because, based on the city's financial?
I know at one point Eagle was driving toward, through the state, the SRF funding. They were, they were actually, we were in line for some, I don't even want to say free money, but it was like, there was some free money and like an extremely low interest rate.
Right.
I think it's 1%, 1.5%.
But, but kind of just to, just one more point. All that would have to be done in a, so you would have to put together the, the study and the report, send it to the state, they would have to approve it all, and your work plan, which, the work plan, I think we're down the road. Once they've approved the work plan and everything, then you can go forward and do, and do the work. So if there was a catastrophic, excuse me, catastrophic failure with the pump station, you would have to fix, you would have to get in there and do something immediately. You wouldn't have time to go through the SRF funding process, you know. If you don't do that in advance, you wouldn't, yeah.
Just to make it clear, I feel very comfortable with the, with the condition of the lift station being utilized as it is above this. However, you know, my track record as far as I run stuff until it doesn't run anymore. But just to give you an idea, the pump that's in there, we just priced it. The pump itself is $6,000. There's two of them. We could put two brand-new pumps in there tomorrow, but there's much more to it. There's, there's the can, there's, and outside of the can, there's what we call a wet well, which is where all the sewer is collected, and that's aging and starting to crumble. That's actually a block structure that, you know, has a life expectancy, where the new ones are actually just a big, it's a, like a big culvert, if you would, or, you know, big, huge pipe, 96-inch pipe that's put down in the ground. So that's what we would look to upgrade.
Are there any other questions from the public?
But you had mentioned, if there was a failure with an external pump, you could put it in, pump-
Yes.
And with some pipes on the ground, like 15-mile was all-
So just, yes.
You could, you could get it to where it needs to dump.
That, that lift station was knocked out of service. It was out of service for probably three weeks during the flood. The whole lift station was inundated with water, was submerged. We lost that whole station and we did exactly that. We pumped, we pumped overhead and threw, threw, so lifted it up with a submersible pump, and you can run it off a generator at DP, and then we, we actually had 6-inch PVC Andre going down Davis Street to where it had to drop into the sewer. So, yeah.
Councilman Deanne?
Sal, you mentioned, if I'm not mistaken, the SRF loan. So is that loan for any infrastructure projects the city might have?
It's geared towards sewer.
Okay. So then, instead of worrying about cash on hand that we have with these funds that were mentioned this night, would it be beneficial to do a loan on the whole project at a 1% interest rate? It's almost, it's almost free money. Rather than worrying about funds that we have on hand, worry about funds that we could get in hand via a 1% loan and finance the whole project?
Well, we have ARPA funds, I think we have four years to spend it, is that right, Phil?
And ARPA funds can be used on what, though? Other than, other than-
Infrastructure.
Other than this-
Water, sewer, broadband, internet.
Yeah, there's other, yeah.
If you're in one of our neighboring communities, butterfly parks.
I mean, can it- I mean, can it be used, though, can it be used, though, for the Davis Bridge?
I, no, because that's not, I don't
I think the Davis Bridge, I'm sorry to interject.
That would be tap granted, I think.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're in a, you're in a good position for a whole nother grant, funding source for that, which we've been working on.
Instead of just worrying about cash that we'd have on hand, immediately available, you know, if we could use larger funds at a very low interest rate, would it make sense to use those when they're available for such a large project?
I think the ARPA funds will help us from keeping rates down. If we went for an SRF loan for all of it, we'd probably have to, even at a 1% or 1.5%
You still got to pay it back.
These rates to fund that capital improvement.
Sure, sure. Just a little bit less of a bite. I get it, sure.
No, but, no, and, and to look at, utilize the ARPA funds for phase one and then look at the potential of SRF loans for maybe the, the lift station and some priority twos or threes.
And to your point, mobilizing all these machinery items at one time rather than four times saves a lot of costs in the whole process. So, that, that's, okay, thank you. That's nothing further.
For sure.
Anyone else from council? Any questions? Sal, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sal.
Got a lot of things to mall over here and
I'll leave this with you and I can, if you need, I can send you the PDF of this as well.
That would be great.
Yeah.
So, if anyone that's watching out in cable TV land would like a copy of this, once I get the PDF from Sal, we can email that over to you.
Please do, yeah.
Just email me or the city clerk. Our email addresses are on the city websites.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Appreciate it.